Hey Catherine, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you loud and clear.
It helps when you turn off the mute button.
That does make it easier.
I know. It only took me ten minutes to get online.
What happened?
It was asking me every question except my blood type. It was ridiculous. But I got on.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Good deal. Well, hopefully it'll be a quick and painless meeting tonight.
I hope so. Do you think everyone will show up?
I don't know. I don't know. I've, I've got the Dodgers game on in the background. I moved, I moved my, my computer and everything, so I've got the TV in, it's on the other side of the camera.
Who's winning?
Um, they just started.
Oh, okay.
But it looks like, uh, the Dodgers have got a guy on third. And one out.
Which game is it?
Um, this is the postseason um, against the Phillies.
Yeah, so it's not the World Series yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay. All right, well Dodgers better win.
I hope so.
Go Blue.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, so if you, if I kind of zone out during the meeting and get it all excited, the Dodgers are doing good.
Okay, and start screaming and?
Yes, but I'm here by myself, just with the dog, so.
Okay. Rocket was acting really weird today. And, um, like he was in pain. And I gave up, you know, a doggy aspirin. It took twenty minutes and he's fine.
He just needed to settle a little bit.
I guess so, yeah. I knew nothing terrible was wrong, but he was pacing and doing all these weird things and the aspirin did it.
Good deal.
It really worked. Oh, and I don't know if the water people are gonna be here today at the meeting. But they're coming out to check the well on next Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
So that's good.
Good.
Yeah, she already got her check and now they're gonna come out and check everything.
Good. Good, good, good.
Yeah, so I wanted to let you know about that.
Unmute, do you hear me now?
I can hear you.
You can look through the video.
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Boy, who's this young lady here in the little horseback? Oh, yes, Catherine, okay. All right.
That was my horse Raz, Raz Mataz.
Raz, mm-hmm, okay, like, like Rasputin.
Yes, well, but he was Raz Mataz. He was, uh, three quarters Arab, Spanish Arab.
Oh, good. Wow, that's a lively one.
Yeah, I actually rescued him.
Yeah, they're good for long distance and desert.
He was good.
It's all good. So how's everybody tonight?
Good, thanks, how?
Mary, you look like, look at that, you got a little, uh, ocean in the background.
Yes, I was telling Catherine, I've changed my location because I'm watching the Dodger game.
Oh, well, let me know what the score is.
Okay, it's still, it's, um, the bottom of the first.
Yeah.
Still zero, zero, no score. But two outs, Dodgers are up. Um, man on first and third, so.
So they might finish it tonight then, if that's the case.
They might.
Okay. I wonder how many Dodger fans we have that are gonna miss it just to come to our meeting. You know, that's gonna be, that's, that's true commitment.
Well, I set up my whole thing.
I like it.
I'm actually watching the, uh, uh, game right on the other side of the camera.
Okay, good. Well, you can keep me posted, I'm taping it at home, but I can, I always like zipping through, you know, baseball's kind of nice because you can watch the whole game in about eight minutes. It's not like basketball that you gotta sit through the whole.
That's true. That is true.
So it looks like Cindy's here. Good. Let's see.
Let me make Cindy a co-host. Make Cindy a co-host. And you are a co-host, Cindy.
I can tell she's excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It took me a minute, I actually tried to click the wrong button to unmute, so. A little discombobulated, but I'll get it.
Well, it should be much easier to hear everything tonight instead of being in person in an echoey room.
Oh, yeah, no, enough of that.
Yeah.
Yes, I would agree.
Yeah, that's headache time.
Now, Mary, is that, is that Lake Tahoe behind where the, where the pier is going out to, or is it the ocean?
It's just, uh, just a picture.
All right. It's lovely. Oh, look at that. Look at that. Your head lined up perfect.
Yeah, right down the middle.
Oh, and Cliff's here. So you got Cliff and Chris, so we got, man, we got five of us going here.
Right, I haven't heard from, um, Scott, but I wouldn't be surprised if we don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Got a couple more minutes, six twenty-eight right now.
Yeah.
Are we gonna meet the new member?
Pardon me?
Are we gonna meet the new member?
If he wants to join the meeting, he's not gonna officially be seated until our December meeting.
Right.
Um, you know, if he wants to join in, that's wonderful.
I sent him, um, a copy of the agenda. And then, um, once it becomes official, I can start including him on, um, the correspondence and stuff that we get.
Right, right.
But it won't be until December that he officially gets started.
Yeah, well, gotta follow the protocol.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about you guys, but I'm sure six thirty, is that?
Six thirty sounds good to me.
Yep, six thirty.
Well, the meeting of the Agua Dulce Town Council Administration, administrative portion of the meeting, please come to order. Uh, this is our October eighth meeting. And we do have an agenda before us here. Um, it's open to the public, but, uh, primarily the time that we spend taking care of our administrative, any items that we have that concern the administrative group rather than the community group. Um, so we've already called the meeting to order, so at this time I'd like to have a roll call from Mary, please.
Okay, Don Henry.
Here.
Chris Udall.
Yeah.
Catherine Segura.
Yeah.
Cliff Grimes.
Yeah.
And Scott Keller is absent. And Mary Johnson is here, so that gives us five out of six members and a quorum is established.
All right, so this is, okay. So, first item we have is the approval of the agenda. Hope everybody's had a chance to look at it. And if anybody wants to make any changes or uh, whatever, now's the time to do that. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to accept the draft agenda as drafted here.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, so a motion on the floor that we accept the agenda as drafted, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so it's passed. Next up, we have the approval of our, uh, minutes for our September tenth meeting. Uh, which they ended up being five pages long. Thank you very much, Mary. Man, but they were good. So uh, first item, I'd like to thank everybody for participating in the country fair. I think we had a good, good turnout. I haven't heard what the final tally was, doesn't really matter, but I think there were a whole lot of people there, and I, hopefully they made a whole lot of money. So, um, anyway, uh, we do have our minutes here from our meeting that was held the week before the parade and the festivities. So if everybody's had a chance to go over the minutes, if they want to change anything or add to it, now's the time to do that. And if there's no changes or addition, uh, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as drafted for our September tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so Chris has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Catherine seconds that one. All right, the motion on the floor is that we, uh, we accept the, um, minutes as drafted for our September tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So those minutes will go into the record book. Uh, wherever that is. Um, and now we move right on to the council reports. And the first up is the president's report. So as everybody can tell, tonight's meeting is being held virtually, uh, via Zoom. And Cindy Grimes has volunteered again, thank you very much Cindy, to co-host the meeting, so she can head off anybody that's knocking on the door trying to come in here and rate our meeting. She can make sure that they are the ones that are supposed to be here. So thank you very much for that, Cindy. Uh, outgoing correspondence, uh...
There actually was outgoing correspondence, but I forgot to get it in, and that was the land sea air for the Agua Dulce Airport Agenda Requirement.
Right.
And that was sent October seventh.
Okay, all right, so that was actually sent, even though it's not reflected here.
Yes.
Uh, incoming correspondence, uh, if you see the community meeting item eighteen B, C, and D, we're gonna go over that in more detail when we come to that point. Um, the miscellaneous incoming and whatnot, we did have a request to be on an upcoming agenda to discuss the establishment of a United Well Owners Association to seek PFAs in water remediation funding. And he sent in an agenda request form.
I actually sent an agenda request form to them.
Oh, so we...
They asked to be on the agenda, and I said, we would, you need to fill out this agenda request form.
Okay.
And then we would talk about getting them on the agenda tonight for a future meeting.
Okay, or I think I told him that he can talk at the open forum for three minutes.
Okay, okay.
So, and that's usually what my standard response is, rather than have your item agendized, it's much quicker if you can just show up for the open forum and give a brief overview, but either, either way is good. Um, did he send that agenda request form back?
No, he did not.
Okay, so we haven't gotten that back.
No.
Um, I did see the letter, you know, that was sent. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't see any problem with it, but I don't, I don't know that we have any concern about the PFAs. And I know in the past, um, grant money sounds really great until you start to make application. And I think going, and I'm going back to uh, when they set up the water group, um, for Southern California, well, in our, I think we're group seven or something like that. And, and it was like you needed to make your application along with um, spending a hundred thousand dollars on engineering fees and whatnot. And the way it was, the way that grant money went was the community comes together and does whatever they believe the grant is going to, um, uh, pay for. But they have to pay for all, everything out of pocket, and then the state steps in, and if it's a fifty percent matching funds, they would approve it for payment of that fifty percent. So I don't know if this is the same, but if, um, if, if he, if he's, if he shows up tonight and wants to share with us, that'd be fantastic. The other is... Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, that there's an awful lot of publicity around PFAs and PFOAs. Um, they're generally known as forever chemicals, and there's about five thousand of them, and I think the EPA has zeroed in on about fifteen.
Right.
And those, um, the PFA contamination is basically everywhere. I mean, you can take a sample of snow at the top of Mount Everest and you'll find PFAs and PFOAs in it. Um, I, I'm not sure that I, I mean, if, if, if I were to offer a suggestion, I mean, it would be the, you know, PFA test, just a single sample. It's very complex to take because, you know, if you use hand cream, shampoo, touch your hair, you, you contaminate your skin with PFAs. That's how pervasive they are. And it's very, very difficult for the average person to take a good PFA test. So to expect well owners to wander out into their back garden and, and take samples is, is, I think, prone to error. Um, but equally, you could, if you wanted to, install an eight-stage reverse osmosis system under your kitchen sink with a drinking water spigot, and that would filter out ninety-nine percent of the PFAs. So practically speaking, um, you know, would you rather spend three hundred bucks on a test or three hundred bucks on a machine that just fixes it? I don't know.
Well, and the thing is...
I know which I'd go for.
Yeah.
You know, I think also, uh, when you do a test, you're testing it for that moment only, okay? Whereas if you go ahead and put the filter on your sink, even if your water changes quality-wise, that filters in play. And so it's gonna catch whatever in between the tests. And as I understand it, the test for these PFA, not only is it difficult to actually grab the proper sample, but it can cost anywhere from eighty bucks to eight hundred bucks, you know, for testing for the PFAs, so.
Yeah, the, the testing laboratory that we use in Santa Paula, which is a state-approved testing facility, is, is three hundred and twenty dollars per sample.
Okay, well, you know, and I know there's a couple lawsuits that are still out there. And obviously some, they want, they want the item to be continued, um, while they do more research as to what harm is actually created and what kind of filters, you know, and, and it's not for you and I that's on a private well because there still is no regulation on the private well. Um, but when you get into the, like the Metropolitan Water District that has ten million subscribers, um, obviously, when they look at how are they gonna treat this water, um, they can't be putting a RO unit on everybody's sink type of thing. So that's always a concern, but...
Well, City of Santa Clarita, well, the Santa Clarita Valley Water Agency actually put a PFA extraction system in. They got a six million dollar grant from the federal government a few years ago. And if you are familiar with that little, uh, uh, connector that goes between New Hall Ranch Road and Solidad Canyon Road, it's where the bridge is over Solidad Canyon, you've got Walmart and Sam's Club a little further up the hill there.
Right.
Little connector where you can turn left and come down towards Solidad Canyon. In that piece of land, that's where they put their, uh, PFA, uh, treatment plant, and that was a six million dollar grant. Now, obviously, they're dealing with, you know, hundreds of gallons a minute of water that they need to treat. But it's, it's not an inexpensive undertaking. And I think broadly, when you talk about grants, you know, if you look at the state of California's latest budget, they're gonna run an eighteen to thirty billion dollar deficit between now and twenty twenty-nine, so I don't think they're gonna be standing up to give people money to do this. They're gonna be expecting DuPont and Three M and the other companies that have been sued by these water agencies to actually step up to the plate and, and, uh, you know, cover it. So I think it's a very complex issue. I think it's a noble, a noble cause, but I think there may be some more cost-effective alternatives for, for, you know, people in our community who are concerned about that.
Okay, great. Well, look forward to hearing, hearing the story. Uh, because I am not an expert on PFAs, so, um, all I know is that it's very expensive to even test for. And, uh, I don't know how agreeable the citizens of Agua Dulce are gonna be as to letting someone else access their water supply. In the past, it's, it's kind of been, it's turned into an ugly situation. Um, but that's not to say that things change over time. Uh, next item we have up is the Youth Climate Commission Clean Air Mini Grant. Posted on local social media and sent to local schools. I don't know what that is.
It was just something from, um, part of the, this Youth Climate Commission. Um, it, it was sent out in my mind, not real timely, because there was only like a week for the kids to um, put together and, and submit for a grant. It's worth a thousand dollars for, um, uh, coming up with an idea for clean air.
And then so, uh, must be the sunspots are affecting your connection there, but anyway. Um, so yeah, okay, so that was mailed out, and, uh, I think I did see that. So I, 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 you know, I don't know that it was anything to really be excited over, but at this point, we're gonna move on to the secretary report, Mary.
Okay, I paid, um, the State Farm liability insurance premium of two hundred and fifty dollars electronically um, on the seventh, which was yesterday. And then I'd like to, um, when I, I paid it, when I called into, um, the local agent, they said, you know, you're always, you're always kind of running late because for some reason we get it late. Um, do you wanna have it paid automatically? So I would like to propose a motion that we have the liability insurance paid automatically. And it is a two hundred and fifty dollar payment every April and October.
Boy, that sounds wonderful. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
Uh, do we need any discussion? Is anybody concerned about that? We've been paying it for the last twenty years that I can think of. Um, and it's, it's a liability policy, and it's been shopped. In fact, um, um, uh, Lou Vince, uh, shopped it as a detective. And nobody else could touch it. So I think, uh, it, it would be ideal uh, to have it paid electronically because we're writing a check or we're getting the notice, and, and I know it's always, it's always down to the wire or late. I mean, it's never a month early, so. Um, anyway, that's my discussion. Anybody else have anything they wanna share in regards to that? If not, uh, we have a motion on the floor to pay our liability insurance, um, electronically. It's been seconded. And, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, great. That sounds good, Mary. Thank you. Uh, treasurer's report is what I'm looking at right now, so.
We had a few expenses related to the Agua Dulce Fair Parade, uh, which we approved, uh, a meeting or so ago. Um, there was a little snafu with the debit card that got fixed, uh, very quickly. Um, and if we look at October, this coming month, or this current month, we have, uh, three council checks that have been deposited that will go into the, uh, election account. And obviously, the two hundred and fifty dollar State Farm liability insurance renewal that Mary mentioned, so. All's good, and we still haven't been to the US bank branch to get that signature card sorted out.
Oh, wow. We gotta do, to get that done. Thanks for reminding me, Chris. Okay, anything else to report?
No.
Perfect. We will get that done. Soon, soon. Association of Rural Town Councils, they had a meeting on September twenty-fourth. Uh, is anybody, was anybody at that meeting or would like to share anything other than what we have written down here? Well, we have, um, they had an update on sexually violent predator legislation. Also, they're concerned about the best projects, which is the battery storage project, um, like Acton and AVEC request for in-person workshop. So those are the items that were the most important on their agenda. And usually if they, um, have any need for any support or backup or whatever, they will, um, notify Mary and myself, and then we can spread it out to the rest of the council members. But that being said, uh, they were, that meeting was held Zoom, if I'm not, let's see, yeah, I think it was held Zoom, if I'm not mistaken. Um, anyway, anybody have anything else to cover during this administrative portion of our meeting?
Yes, I have one thing, Don.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, um, last meeting we did, moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, which totally understand that. Um, also understand that back in June, there was the assassination or murder of, um, House Speaker Melissa Hortman. And I just was, if it's a in order to be, um, unbiased and neutral, should we have a a moment of silence type protocol? So like possibly even, I mean, we don't need one monthly, but it's, it doesn't happen very often, but it would be, I think it would be good to to include, you know, kind of like have some boundaries of what's good, what's not. Where do we, what do we do it? Because both, both incidents extremely unfortunate, and, um, how do we manage it so that we're not putting a bad light to the community?
Okay, well, any suggestions on how to, so you're talking about screening, because up until now, we really haven't had any protocol, but when, when, um, when there's an assassination of, of a person, of a citizen, it, it, I think we've had three moment of silence in the last ten years that I can recall. So, you know, if we need, I mean, quite frankly, I think we could actually have one every single meeting, if you get, if you get right down to it, because every month, something's going on. But, you know, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm open for suggestions. Um, I, I don't, I don't know how to screen out, um, certain individuals. Um, certain individuals or whatever, but I'm I'm open for. Uh, the town council's um. Ideas on doing that.
I don't I don't think so much as a screening amount, but more of. You know, like you mentioned, and something I thought about is, you know, there's there's people that. Are taken from us unfortunately too early, whether it be local, you know, officers, officials. What, you know, would we do like, you know, and I would just want this really to kind of be a moment of thought for us to think about. We don't have to decide tonight. But you know, do we do a, like you said, a moment of silence each meeting? I thought about that. That way. We can take a moment, reflect on who who may have been taken from us. Um, in an unusual circumstance, you know. Um, but I just thought, you know, we should probably put a little thought into it.
Sure, I I agree. The other, what comes to mind also is. A either a a someone on the council. Or uh, someone from the community. Has said, would you mind having a moment of silence for so and so? I think Rosie Heffley.
That's a great example. I thought about that. Also, it's like she passed and we didn't do anything really. For her on here and so I was just like, kind of like went through it in my mind and thought we should probably do something.
Yeah, okay.
Also, if we had done a moment of silence, because that was September tenth. The next day was nine eleven. We should have included that.
Yeah, well, we're learning. So good idea, Cliff. I appreciate it. And let's everybody give us some thought. Next meeting, we can bring it up and then at the administrative portion, and if someone's got some ideas. We'll toss it around and if something sticks, then we'll accept it. You know, as for right now, I, you know, I haven't got. Anyone or anything uh, at this moment. And like I say, we, I think we've only done it three or four times in the last. Ten years or twelve years, but uh, I think I agree, you know, as far as. As having some kind of protocol or some reason or some whatever. And that's what we need to discuss. So uh, we can bring that up. Next month at our administrative meeting and talk it over then. Anybody else have anything else to bring up that pertains to? The administrative portion. If not, we're going to take a little five minute break here and start back up at seven o'clock. With the meaning of the Agua Dulce Town Council, please come to order. This is our meeting that's being held October eighth, twenty twenty five. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance Flag Salute. Cliff, if you would be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it.
Okay. You know, uh, please stand and remove your hat, if you're able to, and then put your hand over your heart. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance. We're waiting on the flag, sorry.
There should be a flag. There it is. There's all glory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cliff, for sharing that. And appreciate everybody being here tonight. Uh, we are holding tonight's meeting virtually via Zoom. And we do have Cindy Grimes, who's our community volunteer, who's going to co-host the meeting. So if you got any questions that she can answer, go ahead and. Put that in the chat box or get a hold of her directly in regards to that. Uh, if you want to record the meeting, plus plus the record icon. And request permission in the general chat or direct message, uh, our co-host Cindy. Uh, at this moment, uh, we've got our agency reports. And the first agency to report. Is Los Angeles County Sheriff, Resident Deputy Deputy Martinez. I think I saw him here. Yes, there he is. Evening.
So for the month of. September, um, we had zero part one crimes. So that's, we had two in August, so that brings our grand total for the year for for five. And then we had three property crimes. Which uh, brings our total to nineteen. Which is a. Twenty-five percent increase in part one crimes and a thirty-five percent increase in property crimes. But I was reviewing some of the stats and. Two of the uh, incidents that were recorded on our end should be for um. Actin, so if the grand total is eight and you take away two, that changes the percentages quite a bit there, just because we have such small numbers. Uh, so th- those will get fixed when they do the final audit for the year. And we had fifty uh, calls for service in uh, Aguado Se. And I got nothing else unless you guys got something.
I think that's, I don't see any hands up here, so it looks good. Uh, if anybody wishes to talk, just raise your hand there and I'll call on you when the moment arises. But thank you very much, Deputy. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Next up, we have the California Highway Patrol. Uh, let's see, I think we have Officer.
Hello, this is Officer Annette speaking.
Yes, how are you?
I'm good. How's it going?
Good, good.
Uh, I could just introduce myself. My name's Adam Annette. I'm uh, one of your liaisons with the Highway Patrol New Hall Area Office. Uh, I'm standing in for Officer Allen today and I've uh, I'm replacing effectively uh, Donald Wilson.
Okay, perfect.
So uh, I have your stats here for September. Uh, we'll start with Sierra Highway. On Sierra Highway, we had twenty-one tickets written, three crashes and one suspended driver. Soldad Canyon Road, we had. One ticket, two crashes and one stolen vehicle with somebody inside it. Uh, Sand Canyon, no activity report there. Boca Canyon, seven tickets, four crashes. Uh, Aguado Se Canyon Road, no tickets, no crashes and uh, one arrest. On everything else over there on that side near the fourteen, that's unincorporated and it's not part of the freeway. We had twenty-two tickets. Uh, one crash, one DUI arrest and one reckless driving. On the fourteen northbound, starting from Sand Canyon going up to Red Rover. We wrote a hundred and twenty-nine tickets. We investigated twelve crashes. Made seven DUIs and we had two suspended drivers. And in the same area on the southbound side, we had a hundred and ninety-one tickets. Thirteen crashes, three DUIs and seven other arrests. Uh, that is all I have for you guys tonight. If anybody has anything for me, I'm here.
Oh, that's a wonderful report. Looks like we have Chris Udall has a hand up in the air there. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, was the um, arrest on Aguado Se Canyon Road related to the incident that happened during the fair?
It was.
Okay, and and have charges been pressed or is that all pending?
Uh, we have completed a investigation report or an arrest report. It's been submitted to the Los Angeles District Attorney and I'm not sure the status of it from there.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious to know whether that was the one. And my second question is, and it's really not related to September, but uh, very recently, actually on Sunday this week at about. We close to five thirty AM in the morning, somebody managed to crush it, crash a pickup truck into a power pole. On Sierra Highway just uh, south of Sleepy Valley and and took. Uh, the the power supply out for a little while for quite a bit of Aguado Se. Uh, what what was the condition of the driver? Um, because by the time we all sort of. Realized what was going on, I think the vehicle had been towed away, but it must have been uh, doing something to uh, to take the power pole and tear it into.
Uh, so just to. Restate what you said. You said it was Sunday morning at five in the morning?
Yeah, Sunday, the whatever it was, um, maybe fifth, was it?
Okay, um, I am not sure. I I wasn't aware of that crash. I can look into it. And email you guys back an answer if you like.
Yeah, if if you, if, well, you'll be at the next month meeting, so we can deal with it then, but I was just curious to know whether the driver was uh. DUI or or what prompted them to run into a power pole?
Yeah, uh, just uh, just so we don't forget it, I will try to get you guys an answer. Um, and then if you guys have any further questions, we can address that uh, in the following meeting.
Great.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Looks like we're clear. Thank you very much, Officer Annette, for attending our meeting and giving us that updated report.
Awesome. Thanks for your time, sir.
Next up, we have Los Angeles County Fire Department. Community Service Representative Maria Ricon. Maria, yes, she's here.
I am here. Um, hello, everybody. Uh, the stats for September, we had a total of thirty-four responses in Aguado Se. Twenty-seven of those were medical calls. Six were good intent calls and we did have one fire. Um, in the area of Sierra Highway and Aguado Se Canyon, it was a outdoor shed. Uh, that was on fire in the back of somebody's property, so total of about six thousand dollars worth of damage. Uh, but that was the only fire uh, that we responded to during the month of September. And that's it for the stats. I did want to pass on to you that we um. Tried to start our cert class last night. Um, our cert class for the fall was supposed to begin last night. Um, unfortunately, we had very low registrations and. Um, aside from the low registrations, uh, an even lower number of people. Um, who actually came to the first class. So I did give um, the students the opportunity. I said, I, you know, I will continue. I will do the class. There were only seven in the room, uh, which is a very, very small class and it's it's almost not worth it because you don't get the group dynamic. You don't get the um, um, there's not enough people to do group exercises and and all of that. So I explained everything and said I. Would continue the class. If that's what they wanted, but you know, this is what would be left out of the class if we did continue and. They all chose to uh, wait until, you know, perhaps just postpone the class, wait until we could get a larger class together and they. They saw the benefit of of having a much larger class. Uh, so we've already booked the women's club. Uh, we're putting it off until after the holidays and we will start the cert class. On January sixth. I'm having the flyer redone. I will reach out to, um, I, that we, we did have two people show up who had not registered. So I captured their information. And um, so I will email all of them. I will email the people uh, both who came last night and who registered but did not come. Uh, to let them know that it's changed and hopefully they will continue with their interest in. Um, attending the class and I think that with a little bit more time, uh, we can get that class a little fuller.
Great, okay, wonderful. What is a good number for you, like twenty?
Uh, twenty is I, twenty is idea. I I I like thirty, but twenty is is really good.
Okay, good enough. And I'm sure I I I'm, I can only imagine that possibly, I know you were bouncing around the holidays, what you were going to do and whatnot. And so maybe the first of the year would be better all the way around.
Yeah, I'm I'm hoping so.
Okay, super, great. Well, thank you for the report, Maria.
Something, I can't find the hand to put up. It's Catherine. I just want to ask Maria some, or tell Maria something. Hi, Maria.
Hello.
Uh, the weekend after Thanksgiving, that we're going to do the tree lighting. And we're going to um, kick off the Spark of Love. And I guess we're getting a fire truck, I, um, but that's what I was going to say is, we should. we should hand out flyers for the CERT class because a lot of people come to that.
Uh, that would be fine. You said you guess you're getting a fire truck. This is the first I'm hearing of it. So have you talked to the station directly? Cause I, I need to know so I can put it on the calendar.
Yeah, I, I talked to the captain last, um, the last meeting.
Okay, all right.
So. Hey, can you, do you have my email?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you email me the information with uh, just the date, the time, the location? It just, I, I need, I just need to make sure that it gets onto the station's calendar. So that, that way if we have somebody overtime or something, it doesn't get overlooked.
Okay, I just, I wanted to say, just um, recommend the flyers for that night, cause I was gonna.
I, I will, yeah, I will absolutely have flyers.
Okay, great, uh, cause I'll help them out if you like.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions for Maria? If not, thank you very much for attending, Maria, and we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Alrighty.
Next up, Acton Aguadolce Library Report. From librarian Jim Wall. Is, yeah, I know Jim's always here.
I'm here. I try. Glad to be here, guys. Hope everyone's doing well. Just a relatively short list of things for you guys for this time. Um, just some upcoming programs. On Wednesday, October twenty-second, four o'clock, we're having, we're doing Morse code bracelets. So um, the folks who show up, they're, they can get a sheet on Morse code, learn about Morse code and, and kind of put a short message using different types of beads on a bracelet to make a, a message out of Morse code. So that should be fun. Um, another thing, we're doing Wednesday, October fifteenth at three thirty. We're doing a design of bookmark program. It's, it's revolving around uh, the overall bookmark contest the library is doing. Remember every year we do a bookmark contest. We take um, uh, from anyone that can get grades K through twelve. They turn in an application with a design bookmark on it. And um, it goes through some hoops and then eventually the Board of Supervisors choose winning um, bookmarks to be professionally printed and distributed at all LA County libraries. So that's going on right now. I believe that goes through the eighteenth, so I encourage you, if you have kids in the household or neighbors or, or something, tell them about it. Jump, they can jump online and grab that application. Or I have them here at the library. Um, and we can get them all involved with that. Um, the only other thing I've got for you guys would just be a notice that on Monday, October thirteenth, we will be closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, other than that, unless you guys got questions for me, that's all I've got.
Okay, well, let's see. I don't see any hands up here, so we're looking good. Thank you very much, Jim. We appreciate it. And appreciate the library. Next up, we have the Department of Public Works, Josie Gutierrez. I think Josie's here.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everybody. I don't really have much to report. Um, we don't have any paving projects planned at this time. Um, the one Solidad Canyon Road Phase Two, that was just recently completed. And then um, the Sierra Highway Phase Four, that is still a priority for our um, department, cause I know it's um, priority for the community. Um, we're still uh, tentatively have it scheduled summer, the fall of next year. Um, and then as far as the multi-way stop signs at Aguadolce Canyon Road and Davenport Road, we're still working on the plans uh, right now. And we're hoping to have those completed um, early February of next year. And from there, then we'll have a schedule of when they will be installed. Uh, I guess one last thing is um, the free tire collection event at our road yard on Sierra Highway in Palmdale is on October twenty-fifth. That's a Saturday from nine AM to two PM. Basically it, unless somebody has questions for me.
Uh, let's see if we have any questions. Looks like you're clear. Thank you very much, Josie. We appreciate you attending tonight. All right, now we have the uh, LA County Parks Vasquez Rocks Report from Park Superintendent Sarah Brewer. Sarah, are you with us here tonight? All right, if she shows up, we'll come back to her. Other than that, we're gonna move right on to the Fifth District Report, Stephanie English. Probably Isabel is here with us tonight. Isabel? Yeah, hi.
Everyone, how are you guys doing?
Great.
Um, just one update. The board finally approved the final budget for this coming fiscal year, or this fiscal year, where we, we're already in it. Um, the final budget is fifty-two point five billion, which is a high number. Um, it's a little bit more than they had originally anticipated. Um, by a little bit, it's almost four billion more than they originally anticipated at the beginning of the budgeting process. Um, there's a bunch of highlights. If anyone has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer. I don't wanna go too much into it. Um, there's a couple of quick things I'll mention just to give you guys an idea. There are over a hundred and fifteen thousand budgeted positions. There's actually a decrease this year of about a thousand or eleven hundred positions, which most of them are already currently vacant. Um, a lot of health services positions are elimi- are being eliminated. There's a ton of cuts in the budget. While it's a high budget, the budget's going towards a lot of big costs like fire recovery, like the AB two eighteen settlements. I think I've mentioned some of this to you guys before. There was also big labor negotiations this year, which caused um, another five point five percent of cuts to different programs and departments. Um, unfortunately, the Department of Parks and Recreation, they receive lots of cuts in their programming and hours. Um, thankfully at Vasquez, I think, I don't think there's too many big changes because it's a regional park. I don't think they have too many crazy changes that will affect you guys. Um, but other parks, general county parks do have a lot of cuts and changes in hours. Um, yeah, I think that's it. If there's any questions on it, I'm happy to answer. And then I did wanna let you guys know, I know I kind of mentioned this last time, but um, my due date is next month. So this could very well be my last meeting with you guys before I go out on maternity leave. Um, I will keep you guys updated and Mary has my contact. You guys all have my number. I will keep you updated. I could, I will see what the baby does, but I might, I might be on next month's meeting. I'm not sure yet. If not, you guys will probably um, have Stephanie, but you guys always have our contact and can reach out with anything you might need while I'm out to uh, Stephanie. She's uh, prepared to support you guys.
Wonderful.
But that's it, unless there's questions.
Uh, looks like we're clear of questions and we wanna wish you the best of health for you and the baby. Sounds wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Uh, next up, we have California Thirty-Fourth Assembly District. Assembly Member Tom Lackey and Anna, if Anna is here or anybody from his office. Now is your time to give the report. If not, we're gonna move on to California Twenty-Third Senate District. Senator Suzette Martinez Valderas. And Tanya, I think in the past, has given the report and I don't see Tanya's name or face here, so we're gonna.
The only thing I, I just got this in today, um, from Suzette Valderas um, through email. Fix It Friday is coming to Santa Clarita, which is if you need help with any government services. Her team will be at the New Hall Library this Friday, October tenth, from ten AM to one PM to assist. Yeah, so.
Perfect.
Wanted to add that in.
All right, that sounds great. Um, so anybody who's interested in that? Uh, and she definitely, I mean, and, and, and anything having to do with state, whether it's DMV, uh, parking, well, whatever, I, I think it, it's worth attending um, Friday, if you have any concerns. Um, next up, we have the US Senate, excuse me, US Congressional District, George Whiteside. Uh, Shannon Hurst is his field representative. Yes, and Maria Anzuela is here tonight. Great, Maria.
Hi.
Hi.
Good to see you all again here. So Shannon is at uh, another, covering another meeting tonight, so I'm here on her behalf. Uh, and on the Congressman's behalf, we don't have a lot to update. As you all may know, the government is currently at a standstill, uh, we're in a shutdown. And I will, the Congressman released a statement about the shutdown and about his vote. I just threw that in the chat if anybody is interested in reading that. Uh, concerns over the, the potential rising cost of healthcare for members are a large reason why he voted uh, against the budget as it stands currently. Uh, but I did wanna ensure everyone in, that our office is still open. We are still working. We are still doing intake on casework. Uh, which we're seeing a lot of. So uh, we are seeing some delays with some agencies like the IRS, which um, is seeing some staff uh, pauses and other agencies. Um, passports seem to still be processing, uh, so feel free to reach out to us if you have any federal casework. We are still working. Uh, we're deemed essential, so we can continue to provide services on behalf of the Congressman. Um, otherwise, I don't have any other updates, other than maybe a reminder that our service academy applications are open for any high school students interested in serving uh, or seeking a nomination from our office. And we also have the Congressional App Challenge, which I'm sure Shannon has already mentioned many times. Uh, but I'm here, if anyone has any questions, happy to answer them for you.
I don't see a whole lot of hands up here, so I think you're clear. I appreciate you taking the time and effort to be here tonight with us, Maria. And give um, uh, Congressman Whiteside our best. All right, next up, we have LA County Water Plan. Um, the Santa Clara River Watershed Area Steering Committee, Major W. Watershed Coordinator Amanda Begley. If she is here and I don't see her, uh, or Heather Turpin. Heather's been here a couple of times. I don't see her either. And uh, the next Santa Clara River Watershed Steering Committee meeting is gonna be held October sixteenth, which is uh, a week from now. And it's gonna be one PM to three PM at the Santa Clarita City Hall, which is down there on Valencia Boulevard for anybody that wants to attend. Um, next up, we have Senate Bill Five Five Two. Small At-Risk Task Force Working Group for LA County Drought Resilience Plan. County Department of Regional Planning to achieve meaning, meaningful and long-term improvements in water resiliency. Mary Johnson included as a representative of domestic well owners. And Chris Udell was invited as a small water system representative. So do we have anything that needs to be reported?
Uh, done, like, yeah. Yeah, so we had, um, we're making some reasonably good progress in the Small Water Systems Task Force. I think Mary might have attended the last call that we had um, earlier this month. I think it was on the second or third of October. Um, we, we're now starting to, um, we've identified about half a dozen different buckets of uh, areas where assistance can be provided. And now we're starting to flesh out the detail within those buckets. Um, that's within the um, the task force. And then the working group will meet uh, later this month on the twenty-third. But generally, there's progress. I mean, progress will result in a proposal, I assume, at some point for consideration by the Board of Supervisors or whatever. But certainly, um, you know, from my perspective, I think there's a lot of sensible stuff being discussed. And one of the, one of the issues that came up, which I think is, is, you know, an interesting concept is, um, if you consider Aguadolce, I think there's a private water system on Darling Road. There's a private water system on Escondido Canyon in the um, Mobile Home Park there. There's a private water system in um, the Mobile Home Park on Sierra Highway near LaShan. There's a private water system here in Sleepy Valley, each of which has its own challenges. But when you look at part of the, the goal of SB five fifty-two, which is to help people in the event of a drought or a wildfire, it, it's, the, 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 the the approach that a lot of people take is, is to try and create a physical connection. So for instance, for Sleepy Valley, you know, our connection would be to Santa Clarita Valley Water Agency's Water Main somewhere down near Vasquez and Sierra Highway, which is a multimillion dollar project and very expensive. And one of the things that we floated is whether we can create virtual inter ties. So we set up these mutual aid networks. So if somebody's well goes dry or there's a brush fire and it knocks out power. And Sleepy Valley, for instance, is the water company is still whole and functioning. Whether we can actually start to take water from our storage and deliver it to these individual well owners. And vice versa, you know, if something happens in an emergency for Sleepy Valley and somebody's got a ten thousand gallon storage tank on their property. You know, can we get a truck up there, pull four thousand gallons out and put it in our storage tank? So it's, it's a reasonably new concept to create this sort of virtual inter ties between a defined number of private properties and, and water systems in a particular area. But I think it's one of the interesting things that's uh, come out of the discussion so far.
Great, sounds good. So it, it seems like you're kind of brainstorming on new ideas, it sounds like.
Yeah, we, we had the Cal Mutuals Conference in Long Beach. Uh, it's held in different parts of the state every year. Central Coast, Northern California, Southern California. This year it was in Long Beach. And uh, one of the uh, members of the Cal Mutual Board of Controllers is actually the uh, the chairman or the chairperson of the Metropolitan Water District, which is not not an insignificant water agency in the state of California. So it was very interesting to be able to sit down with him over dinner and just talk through some of these ideas and, and see what their take on it was.
Great, glad to hear it. All right, and now the moment we've all been waiting for, the Waste Management Report. Given by Quincy Little of Waste Management. Quincy?
Hi, everybody. So I don't have too much to report. Um, we did have our um, free disposal day last Saturday. I'm still waiting on the tonnage to come back for all the air, unincorporated areas. Um, but other than that, did anybody have any questions for me, concerns?
No.
Great, I will put my information in the chat.
Okay, thank you very much for attending, Quincy.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our Presentations and Discussions portion of the meeting. Um, under the old business, we have PSPS, Southern California Edison. Uh, I don't know if there's any update on that anybody would like to give. Um, but aside from that, we do have the RTG Investments, uh, which is the Aguadolce Residential Project, also known as TT five oh three eight five. That Chris has been working very hard on. Uh, so Chris, do you have anything additional to?
No, I mean, obviously, I, I, I was, I actually went up to the Lancaster landfill on Saturday morning on my way back. I uh, took a look at the uh, lack of progress on the side of the hill there. It really doesn't seem to have changed much in the last twelve months.
Yeah.
Um, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing.
Yeah.
Um, but uh, we certainly haven't uh, delved any further into it, so.
Yeah, you don't see any new two-by-fours sticking up in the air.
No, no, no sticks. Uh, and in fact, um, that would require an awful lot of bonding and signed off plans by LA County and the owners of this project have shown at least historically little sign of wanting to spend the money to do that.
Okay, great. How about anybody from the uh, community group, uh, Save Rural Aguadolce? Does anybody wanna give a report? From that group? If not, we'll just wait until we hear something that's beneficial. Um, we do have the um, uh, the President's Report, which is uh, twenty twenty-five Aguadolce Town Council Meeting Format, as you can tell, in an effort to be most inclusive and commu- and with community participation and effective communication, the council will continue with virtual meetings and have an in-person hybrid meeting twice a year. Virtual meetings will be January, February, March, May, June, July, October, like ten. Virtual meetings will be January, February, March, May, June, July, October, like tonight, and November. The in-person hybrid meeting will be April and September. Location of the in-person meetings will be at the Aguadolce Women's Club, which is on Aguadolce Canyon Road, if anybody would like to attend. Uh, August is dark for summer break. So based on public participation, we may revisit and amend the schedule and format in the future. Uh, Incoming Correspondence for Action, uh, Public Works Equity Framework Draft. The Equity Framework Draft developed through a review of Public Works Policies, Employee and Customer Feedback and Community Input. The Equity Framework outlines the priorities and strategies that will guide Public Works over the next five years to reduce inequities and improve the well-being of all communities. Public Review, Public Works encourages all residents and business to explore the draft Equity Framework, which is available in twenty-three languages. To provide comments, you can go to the website that's listed there in our agenda. Uh, next up is we have Public Hearing, Community Meetings and Workshops. We have Cannabis Business Free Legal Training, Choosing a Business Structure, that's October the eleventh. Uh, from eleven A M to twelve thirty in Quartz Hill Library. If anybody would like to attend that, you can get that more information on on our agenda and on their website that's listed on our agenda. Countywide Community Wildfire, well, Wildfire Protection Plan, also known as the C C W P P Workshop. It's gonna be October sixteenth, six P M to seven thirty P M at High Country and Antelope Valley Foothills. To register for the online workshop, you can go to the website that's listed there in our agenda, which is on our website. Uh, incor- inc- incoming correspondence for notice. Oak Tree Permit Ordinance Update, LA County Planning is working on an update to the Oak Tree Permit Ordinance, also known as the O T P. To streamline the permitting process, encourage planting new oak trees. And further encourage redesign to preserve and minimize impact to oak trees. The draft ordinance uh, is expected to be available for public review at the end of this month, October thirtieth, for a forty-five day review. For details, you can go on our website and see the link there that'll take you right to their website. Regional Planning Plans that were filed. Uh, Valley Sage Road, had Verizon, uh, they wanna modify an existing wireless facility. Uh, there is a special event, which has already happened at the Aguadolce Country Fair and Parade, the twentieth September. Uh, three-three-two-three-seven Bobber Road, uh, they wanna put up a storage building over there. And uh, looks like there's an initial study for a conditioning use permit to authorize the construction, operation, and maintenance of a guest ranch for a nature retreat and summer camp for children in foster care in the A two-two zone. And it's presented by Peace for Kids. Uh, eleven-two-twenty-three Lewis Hill Road, they wanna put in a new pool and spa with at least five-foot setbacks for pool and two-five, two-point-five-foot setbacks for pool equipment. The pool area perimeter walls uh, are all around this new pool. And it's gonna be a hundred and twenty feet by three-foot high wall and thirty feet by six foot. So the um, three-three-six-three-eight Aguadolce Canyon Road Special Event Permit for Aguadolce Women's Club to host the Parade of Tables. Catered fundraising event for approximately three hundred attendees. That's at the Aguadolce Airport, if you didn't recognize that address. It's gonna be held December sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, last item is Aguadolce Canyon Road, uh, eighteen by thirty-five foot pool with a seven-foot spa. At this moment, we're at the Open Forum portion of the meeting, which whoever wants to raise their hand, we can listen to them, whatever they have to share with the community for maximum of three minutes. So the first hand I saw was Cindy Grimes. Cindy, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Dawn, and uh, my main question is what and how can we go about enacting the Dark Skies Ordinance? Um, as I drive, as I look around, I am seeing more and more lights that are extremely bright, some of them actually are blinding. And it is encroaching on our dark skies. Um, I have also seen a couple of comments on social media that also have to do with the same concern. Um, what can we do? How can we go about it? And, you know, if if there's somebody that I can talk to to figure out how we can work on this, because I feel like the more and more people who are um, relocating out this way are not understanding, can we as, or can you guys as a council put together a community standards district that discusses the things that they can and can't do? Is it something that the county has to do? Is it Public Works? Where can we as a group go from here?
Deputy Martinez.
Thank you.
Um, so I've written uh, violations of Title twenty-two before. Uh, usually it's like a neighbor, you know, moves in, puts a bunch of floodlights, you know, and then we go over it, um, if they continue, then we it, it's a, it's a report that's written and they, they get basically cited. Um, I could put something on social media kinda like linking the section for, to, for, for narration, people that may not be aware of it. Uh, but you're gonna have to call it in kinda thing when it's happening. I'll try to brief it to the station, um, as far as, cause a deputy that goes out at night when it's happening, when I'm not working, is not gonna be familiar with Title twenty-two, I could, I could guarantee that right now. Um, so I'll, I'll put something out for the troops to reference, uh, so they're able to do that, but if you call it in, we can at least educate. Um, you know, whoever is violating it, I'll put something on, on, on my station's uh, Facebook page and Instagram and stuff.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Deputy Martinez.
That's a start. Uh, and the next step, I think would probably be Oscar Gomez, if I'm not mistaken, the zoning enforcement. Uh, but I think your best bet is to start with the sheriffs to start with. And if, um, if Deputy Martinez posts it on Nextdoor and Facebook and whatnot, hopefully it catches the eye to where people understand what Dark Skies is all about, cause I agree, it, it seems like it's you know, as soon as one person puts up a satellite, another person puts up a satellite, and they figure, well, they can get, get away with it, and they had if you, if you read the letter of the law, which I don't know anybody abiding by the letter of the law, but it talks about there's, there's a thing called light trespass, which um, Nazir Khan, was he, when he lived here in the community, he said it was equal to a forty watt light bulb uh, passing across uh, your property line. So I know a lot of these new L E D lights uh, come on, you know, they're screaming bright. And uh, I don't know that people are aware of what the restrictions are. But uh, I think if uh, Deputy Martinez can post that, it'll open, it'll, it'll begin to open eyes without needing to file an actual report, but if need be, you know, if they say, well, we read the report, we don't care, we're gonna do it anyway, you know, then it's time to take action.
And, and part of that education, Dawn, that we do, when we do uh, contact people is like, hey, you're allowed to illuminate your property for security purposes, but you know, has to be angled at a forty-five degree angle, it has to be on a timer, a motion detector, it just can't be blinding on twenty-four-seven or all night or whatever. So like, there is, you know, there's that happen meeting, you wanna have those bright L E Ds, great. And you wanna, you wanna illuminate those points of entry, awesome, but put them on a motion sensor and, and put them on a timer, so that they, so they serve the purpose of deterrent without, you know, disturbing the lights and stuff, they've got light ordinance.
Yep, I hear you there, okay?
Yeah, the other thing, I can um, put a link on our website on what the Dark Skies Ordinance actually is and the, the details to it, so I can add that to our website.
Perfect, all right.
One final thing, Cindy, if you go to the Signals website, the newspaper in Santa Clarita, probably within the last ten days to two weeks, there was an article on exactly this. And there is a nonprofit uh, based out of Castaic. And the person who runs that nonprofit was quoted in the article. Um, I think it may be worth your while reaching out to him, because he is a very strong proponent of the Dark Skies Ordinance and working with LA County to enforce the ordinance of Dark Skies for unincorporated areas of LA County.
Thank you, Chris, and I did wanna say, I was hoping Isabel would stay on here because I did see a post, I wanna say it was through the Signal that uh, Supervisor Barker had actually brought up about the Dark Skies Ordinance and the light pollution that is starting to take place, so um, I'll definitely look that up, Chris, and thank you so much, Deputy Martinez, um, and Mary for making sure that there gets some more information out to everybody.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. Chris, what you have?
Dawn, I, I had um, really just a couple of follow-ups to stuff that we zoomed through in the, in the agenda. Uh, Regional Planning Plans, um, some of you may have noticed that the former Alamo Church property is now the Brighton Academy. Um, I, I'm not exactly sure what the Brighton Academy is, is intended to be, obviously, we've not seen any planning applications, I understand from Mary, it was a ministerial review based on the previous uh, you know, classification of the, of the site. But um, you know, there, there is now what appears to be a K-something-through-something school uh, springing up uh, in the community in addition to the ones that we've got up in the, you know, the main part of Aguadolce. And then on the County Wildfire Protection Program, um, this was something that obviously, there's another, what, what I would characterize as a listening session coming up, but as you pointed out, um, our particular area, this is a regional planning-driven initiative intended to help communities become more fire-wise and fire-resistant. Um, and I thought that, um, you know, we we initially uh, got split into two groups based on geography, so uh, to, to me, it was interesting that I, I Cliff was there, Mary was there, Jackie Ayo was there, and there's people in Wrightwood. But about fifty percent of the people who took the time to dial into the call and ended up in our little breakout session. And uh, I think there are some things that we can bring back to the community from that. Um, you know, there was some good discussion, I, I talked to Maria at this past weekend's cert drill at the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds about some of the ideas. And potentially, I think, um, there are certain things that are unique to our type of community, like you know, if a wildfire breaks out, and where'd you take the horses, and where'd you take the goats, and you know, what should you be doing and what shouldn't you be doing, and you know, how do you create a fire-wise community that gives you the ability to take advantage of insurance company discounts? Um, so that, there's a, a way to go, but I think that um, perhaps Aguadolce can spearhead some of the initiatives to, to create a series of ambassadors within the community who understand what all this is about and get the word out, um, in a way that sort of complements what the county agencies are trying to do.
And that website is posted on our agenda, if somebody would like to attend it and looking through it right now, it looks like it's gonna be October sixteenth from six P M to seven thirty P M. So it, but they are asking you to register for the online workshop. So that is, the, the website is listed there on our agenda, if anybody would like to attend, should be wonderful. Um, anybody else for open forum, I'm gonna share something for three minutes. If not, we're gonna go right on to our committee reports. And first item A is the Election Committee, Lorna Leslie, Lorna? You've been patient?
Oh, hi, I wasn't really planning to do a report for this meeting necessarily, but I guess I'm, I could wing it here. Um, as I think you, most of you probably heard, you did have um, uh, one additional candidate that was confirmed, and uh, we will be putting them in at, I believe, Mary, you said the December meeting?
Yes.
Installation, is that correct? Um, yeah, so that's uh, Nathan Frank, so uh, looking forward to meeting him and and then we'll need to discuss down the line, um, if we wanna try to do a special election to fill our still lingering, basically vacant seat. Um, or if we wanna roll it over into the next election, and I thought that uh, Mary, I think, has that on the agenda uh, upcoming to discuss. Um, so that's, that's about it, um. You know, I know we had a, a few different people that expressed some interest and uh, may want to join us in the future, so I'm gonna continue to communicate with anybody that's interested. Um, and make sure that we have, I have them on a list, so that when we do open the nominating period, they're notified. So if you have anybody like that, um, you know, as, as I know many of you reached out to people, feel free to send them my contact info or vice versa, so that I can make sure that we keep them abreast of, of any, um, you know, uh, opening nomination periods, opening any updates in the election process at all, okay? And unless anybody has any questions, I think that's it for me.
That looks like you're clear. Thank you very much for that report, Lorna.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone, for your help and support in this.
Wonderful. Next up, we have the report from the Film Committee chaired by Catherine Segura.
Hi there. Um, there were two um, production shoots last month.
All right, and Parks and Trails Report by Mary Johnson.
Okay, um, at our last meeting, we talked briefly about um, the possibility for a pocket park on the vacant property that is next to the Women's Club. And I'm just gonna go ahead and share um, my screen with that letter. Okay, let's make sure. Share. Okay, so, um, this is a letter just a little background, um, the, there's a vacant property next to the Women's Club on the south side that has come up for sale. And at our last meeting, we talked about um, the idea of creating a pocket park for that. And I know, um, based on what Isabel told us tonight, that the budget for parks has really gotten cut down. But i- in addition to the budget, there is funding available through um, Measure A. And Measure A is Los Angeles County Safe, Clean Neighborhood Parks and Beaches Measure, which is a um, tax on your property tax that you pay every year, and that measure is to address park equity and improving access to local recreation opportunities in an underserved area. And I point out that establishing a pocket park here would directly advance Measure A's commitment to ensuring all communities including rural ones like Aguadolce, have fair access to neighborhood green spaces. And I wanted to point out that, um, even though we have Vazquez Rocks, and, and what I say in the letter is, while our community is proud to be home to Vazquez Rocks Natural Area, a treasured regional land park and ecological preserve, Aguadolce remains without a single active or community park. Vazquez Rocks is a regional destination focused on conservation, education, and tourism. Its rugged terrain and environmental protections make it unsuitable for everyday neighborhood recreation or community gatherings. A park, a, a pocket park would fulfill a different and complimentary purpose. It would provide a safe and walkable space for families, children, and seniors. A place for play, rest, small community events, and outdoor connection. Um. There, there is absolutely no shade over at Vazquez Rock. If you've been there in the summer, it's. Almost impossible to um. Have an enjoyable time in the midst of summer at Vazquez Rock. Shade trees, a shade shelter, something um, in this little pocket park would be ideal. So um, that's basically the letter, and then I included um. For the supervisor, um, copies of the parcel map and and kind of the location of where this is at. Um, but based on that, I would like. And and one other thing, Chris. Had indicated that we might want to add in that. Our neighboring um. Community of Acton has a uh, active park. And and we are still without one. So I might add that into it also. But based on that, I would, I move to um. Send this draft letter to the supervisor. And um, see what happens.
Okay, great. Do I hear a second? I'll second that. Any discussion regarding this ladder? This, this letter or the pocket park?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea also. Okay. All right, so all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, send it. That's great. Yeah, I I understand that they're low on funds. But this, you know, this is like. Two people's salary. You know, uh, if to purchase. The whole land, you know, and then they're they're gonna be exempt from county taxes. And I mean, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. Um, the 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 covered arena property fell through. I I I wish that 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 could have been obtained, but. This here being is right next to the Women's Club, the fact it's on the market. Once it's gobbled up, it's gone. You'll never see it again. So hopefully. They look at it that way, and they look at the the dollar signs. We're not talking millions and millions or billions, as they mentioned their budget was. We're talking. What was it, two hundred thousand dollars or something like that? So let's see what they say. You know, all we can do is try. Um, and. If they decide not to, I would like to find, hear the reason why. So. I think let's end it off, and let's see what happens. Next up, anything else to bring up, Mary, on Parks and Trail?
No, that's it.
All right, uh, water stewardship, uh, we're getting toward. The lowest. Dryest part of the year, October uh, is probably the worst. But it seems like, you know, we've probably had less than, business-wise, we've probably had less than a hundred, a hundred and fifty calls where. Where wells are dropping down. But. The beauty is. You know, at the end of October, the days get shorter and we have more likelihood of receiving rain. Which, as I mentioned before, rain helps. Not only people can turn their sprinklers off, but it also. Does contribute to the recharge, somewhat to the recharge of the groundwater that everybody's pulling out of. So. The fact that days get shorter, the temperature gets cooler. That's all good. Uh, when we start getting dry well calls. In February and March, we got a real problem. So hopefully we get. Not too much rain, but enough rain to where we can continue on. With Aguado C as we all know it. Uh, disaster planning, uh, Gary Habden or Chris, do you have anything that you wish to report?
Yeah, I think Maria covered off the postponement of the local cert class to early twenty twenty-six. Um, last weekend, Saturday, the Antelope Valley Cert team. Uh, organized a really good uh, event that various cert teams from around the area were invited to attend. Uh, it was a refresher. Much more hands-on than you would get in a typical cert class. Uh, you went hands-on with a uh. Uh, three different sizes of fire hose hooked up to a pumper truck. Uh, the the big one really takes some handling that they use to put out, uh, you know, house fires and stuff. Um, cribbing for, you know, supporting buildings and cars, first aid, sandbagging. Um, how to properly, you know, take people and roll them onto blankets and doors and backboards and and s- secure them and and move them. So it was a very well-attended event and and very good. Um, the one thing I did want to mention is that I, you know, when we knew that Maria was going to organize the cert class, obviously, we. Um, helped the local amateur Aguado, uh, Acton Aguado C Amateur Radio Club out with the insurance every year to go and use the bandstand at Acton Park. So I'd written to both Gary and the president of the Amateur Radio Club and said, hey, guys. We've got the cert class coming up. Um, it's a great way to um, to capture. New members to your club and get people in our community qualified to use VHF handheld radios in the event of emergency. I heard nothing back. And it certainly makes me question. Why we're supporting them so actively if they're not prepared to reciprocate and what I think is a worthy. Uh, you know, it's it's ten minutes, one evening to address that cert class, let them know. That they can come along and do that. I know in previous years. They've done it. And in the last two cert classes, they haven't, but some of the people who attended the cert classes then went on to become. Active members of the radio club. So I don't exactly know what their mission is. But it's certainly not helping as much in terms of, you know, emergency. Response if if they're not prepared to reach out to community members and and, you know, integrate them into their training courses.
Right. Okay. All right, appreciate your break.
Yeah, Chris, that that's um. I'm glad you brought that up because um, in the past, when um. Gary has reached out to us to help him out with the radio club for insurance. I usually try to reiterate, you know, it'd be nice to have a report from you every once in a while, you know, just pop into the meetings and and. Tell us what what all you're doing and and if you've got anything going on. So. Um, I think it warrants a. For me to reach out again and um. Ask that he become a more active participant.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if if we don't get better by, you know, you know, two years ago. There was a different president and he moved out of the area and handed over the reins to someone else. Um, this, I'd written to Monroe Calls, who was the someone else, now the president of the radio club. Last year, when we had the cert event, and I never heard back. This year, I thought, well, I might as well copy Gary on it. Just in case it went into Monroe's spam inbox. Um, and I heard back from neither of them. So, I mean. To the extent that we don't get better engagement, I think when they reach out to ask for insurance, we should direct them towards Acton Town Council.
Okay. All right. So. Uh, next up. Anything else to add to that, anybody? I think we all, uh, we all agree.
Yep.
Announcements. Read to Rover Promotion for Department of Animal Care and Control. For all of October. Read a book to shelter. To a shelter dog and have your adoption fee waived. Adoption fee also includes spay, neuter, and microchip. So that's an opportunity right there. Household hazardous waste and e-waste collection, first and third Saturday of each month. Nine AM to three PM. On West City Ranch Road. Uh, the Environmental Collection Center. Sound the alarm, Red Cross, October eighteenth, which is coming up here shortly. Ten AM to two PM, Red Cross is installing free smoke. Alarms. To schedule or to volunteer. Go to the website that's listed there on our agenda. Association of World Town Councils having their next meeting October twenty-ninth. And it'll be via Zoom. Held at seven PM. Our next Aguado C Town Council meeting will be held November twelfth, and it will also be virtual. So I appreciate everybody's participation tonight. Seems like. All the questions were answered. If not, you can drop us an email. Um, and for the future agenda items, uh, establishment of a United Well Owner Association. To seek PFAs in water remediation funding. Uh, but he didn't really. Complete that agenda response.
Yeah, I I think I guess I will reach out to him again and just say, um. We discussed this at our um, October meeting, but are still. Waiting to have you fill out the agenda request. And and the reason why we do that is so that we have an idea of. What the larger purpose is. I mean, he was pretty clear in his is extensive email that he sent, but. He needs to kind of put it in in play as to what he wants from us and how long it's gonna take and and what he really hopes to achieve from this. So. I'll reach out and say um. We discussed it, but are still waiting to get your formal agenda request for back.
Well, as as I see it, Mary. It needs to be a presentation made to the community. And I think whatever community members are here. Whatever questions they have, they're gonna be able to ask him. It it's not like just a rubber stamp where, oh, I sent this to the town council and boom, here we go. So I agree a hundred percent. Let's. Let's send it out, you know, maybe he had illness or something in the family, I don't know. But. Uh, for some reason, and it was a wonderful letter. It it sounded like a great idea, but, you know, I I think. It needs to be presented to the community. And who's gonna run it? You know, who's gonna assemble these people? Where are you gonna have? The meetings at, you know, there's a whole lot of unknowns and unknown timeframes. And oftentimes, these grants look to be wonderful, the 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 term, the the, you know, when you, when you, when you. Talk about a grant, everybody thinks, oh, it's it's free money. But not realizing, such as I didn't realize. The amount of effort, engineering, and work that goes in it just for the application. To get it applied. And we were, we were, we were quoted a hundred thousand dollars, you know.
Right, and and bottom line, when Chris says, you know, put in a reverse osmosis system and it pretty much takes care of it.
You know, but anyway, all right.
So I I think, Mary, in the response, um, to the extent that he does want to come to the next meeting, we can put it on the agenda item. I think we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I would be more than happy to, you know, propose that if it's necessary, if not, do it. Obviously, if he doesn't show up, we take it off. Um, and don't have to discuss it. But I think in the response, if there are. Like-minded people within the community that support his vision of what he wants to do about these forever chemicals. Then they should really be in attendance at that meeting too. So that we can understand what more than one person in the community thinks about this.
Correct. Okay. Um, yeah, so we'll put it on for the November agenda.
Sounds good. All right, so all I'm waiting for now is a uh, a motion. And a second and a vote to adjourn this meeting.
At eight oh four PM, which seems to be a record of late, I will make a motion to close the meeting.
Perfect, okay. Oh, seconded by Catherine, she was hiding out there. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you a month from now.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Cindy.
You're welcome, Mary.
Good night, John Boy.